Okay, are we on? Okay. Welcome to our Twilla County School District Board meeting. We'd like to welcome all of you. We did things a little bit different. We had a work session earlier. So anyways, but I want to re-welcome people that have been here for both. Thank you to our SPOT SD representatives and our union representatives. We appreciate them being here. And we will start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which has stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also forgot to welcome Chad Hymus. He's from our state school board and he'll talk to us in a second.
Matt.
Matt. I said Chad.
It is a Hymus, but.
Chad lives in Twilla County. I am so sorry, but Matt, thank you. And there was one other thing. Anyways, we will go ahead and start with patron comments. Sorry, we'll do patron comments in a minute.
There's still time to sign up if you're a patron.
Sorry. This, okay, we are going to do our district recognition. And it's the district office. So we will turn the time over to Clarissa. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I am Clarissa Goddard. I'm the Transportation Director. And for September this year, we would like to recognize one of our substitute bus drivers, Cindy Kirk. Cindy has been a substitute bus driver for the school district since 2014. Since her time with us, she's driven, I think, almost every route. I think the only route she hasn't driven is in Ibapa. And she might have even driven that one. But she's chomping at the bit to get out there and drive that one, so.
It's Ibapa Elementary.
Ibapa Elementary, sorry. She's done the high school route to Winover High from Ibapa. So it's the elementary route out there. So we're hoping that she makes it out there. But our drivers out there are pretty dedicated, so we're hoping. Anyway, she takes time off of her other job at the beginning of the school year, several weeks, just to help us at the beginning of the school year to make sure that we have enough coverage for our routes. She's helped us set up preschool routes at the beginning of the year. She's always looking for ways to improve safety in our routes that we have and improve efficiency when she's driving a field trip or an activity trip. It's really great because she like dresses the part. If they're going to, this is the place, Heritage Park, she'll have like a pioneer outfit on and the kids just love it. Or she'll know like the best seat to sit in and know the best place to get a hot dog at the stadium. And she'll tell the group where to go. So it's great. Everybody requests her quite a bit for our field trips. For our special needs and younger kids, she's always got some kind of an audiobook or something like that that she shares with them on the route just to help make their day a little bit better. She's even suggested like some kind of like an audiobook library at the bus garage for other drivers to be able to come in and exchange audiobooks to share on their buses with kids too. During the summertime, she also has a lemonade stand that she does with her grandkids and a bake sale. And some of the proceeds that she gets from that, she donates to the homeless and displaced students in our district. So I think that's something very awesome that she does as well. So anyway, thank you.
Do you want to tell us someone here with you? And we're grateful for all you do. Do you want to introduce who's here with you?
Well, I brought my husband Curtis.
Thank you.
Everybody else is at flag football practice.
We know how that goes.
But there's a couple other people here from the bus garage. Mitzi's here. And I work with some really great people. I really do. And our only goal is to make sure that all of these kids get to school safely and that they have a great day. So I'm glad that I get to do that. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Come up.
Come up here. We have a little, there's a little gift card in here and a certificate. And then this is a gift from the Twilla Education Foundation. And we appreciate all that you do for us. And you can give these guys a high five or a knuckles or elbow on the way.
Madam Chair and members of the board, or Madam President, I'm sorry. It's my pleasure to represent the district office administrative staff in sharing with you our selection of Marie Denson as our Certified Employee of the Month. And I'm going to speak a little bit about Marie. I will tell you that she's not one to seek the limelight. And, but she deserves a lot of credit for many of the great things that are happening in our district. And so I want to read a little bit of a bio. Marie Denson has worked in the field of public relations and public affairs for the last 10 years. She spent most of her career as an Air Force Public Affairs Officer working in Europe and throughout the nation, providing support for humanitarian missions, national disasters, homeland defense, civil unrest, and other domestic operations. Sounds like she's perfectly set out to, you know, prepared to deal with COVID in the school district, right? She is currently the Communications Director and Public Information Officer for Twilla County School District that serves more than 20,000 students and 2,000 employees. She serves as the Chief of Public Affairs for the Utah Air National Guard. She specializes in crisis communication, content development, and senior executive counsel. She received a Master's of Arts degree in public relations from Full Sail University. In 2015, she graduated from the University of Arizona in 2011 with a bachelor's degree in communications. She was hired five years ago. I remember it very well. A top pool of quality candidates, and she stood out. She's been helpful building up our department from the ground floor up, including crisis communications, media relations, providing senior executive counsel and trainings to superintendents, directors, and principals. She has increased and improved our online presence for the school district significantly. Improved our brand management, provided consistent internal and external messaging, was the lead for both of the levy and bond campaigns that we had in the last two years. And most recently, has helped provide information to our staff and families during this unprecedented COVID-19 pandemic. She's currently serving as the Utah School Public Relations Association President. And after hours, she provides support to the Utah Air National Guard as the Chief of Public Affairs. So I asked our staff a little bit about her. And, you know, they've, it's been said that the greatest honor comes from your peers. So here's what her peers said. One person said, where do I start? I want to include a brief list of some of the biggest accomplishments that have happened under Marie's leadership. And then bullet points. Improved information on the website, communications handbook for administrators, creating mutually respectful relationship with the news media, tremendous work on the school bond in 2019 and 2020, monitoring and maintaining multiple social media platforms, proofing and critiquing written documents, ensuring clear communication between TCSD and stakeholders. She's very good, not an English teacher, but should be. And we need to give her an honorary red pen because she's a very good editor. Pushing for transparent systematic approach to how we do business and collaboration on best practices with other school districts and PIOs. Another peer said, Marie is an individual with high standards striving to improve Twilla County School District. I know when I speak with her, she will be honest, provide me with constructive feedback. She is such a vital member of our administration team and wants others to see our district as a premier organization. Another person said, Marie sees things through the lens of Public Information Officer, but is also astute as to the needs of TCSD and the uniqueness of school issues. Another person said, Marie is a huge asset to our team. She always provides a unique perspective and is happy to lend her communication expertise to anyone. She is such a confident communicator and has great digital media skills. And then the last person, Marie is a great project manager. She sees projects through. She's always looking for ways to highlight the great things happening in our district and schools. She really cares about kids, teachers, and schools. She's a great example of setting high standards of excellence for herself and others. And as superintendent, I'll tell you, Marie makes my job much easier and all of us at the executive level. She represents TCSD in such a positive light. So thank you, Marie. We appreciate you. We recognize your outstanding efforts and contributions to hashtag Team TSCSD. And I will tell you, before Marie came, I didn't even know what a hashtag was. And now I do, and I'm Twitter literate, if that's such a thing. And there's just so much that she does for our district. So Marie, thank you very much.
I have my work family here. So glad you guys showed up. Thank you. No, thank you, guys. This is great.
We have some gifts for you as well. This one's from TEF and then from the board and district. And another little gift. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marie. Okay, now we will move on to public comments. I apologize. Our first patron. If, open forum is limited to five minutes per individual and a total of 30 minutes for all comments. Please, when you come up to the mic, speak your name. And we will start with Alex Childs.
Okay, yeah, so my name's Alex Childs. And I'm not sure if I know too many people in here. So I grew up in Grantsville and I'm a PA down at the Grantsville Clinic. I have some kids and some are just starting elementary school. And so my comment has to do with that kind of stuff. We're going to be moving into the President's Park Development up by 20 Wells Elementary School that's being built. And we were just considering my son going into 20 Wells and hoping to give comment that, about this immersion language program, starting there. And as I kind of reached out to Corley Ward and Brandy and those guys who were over, they suggested I come and give voice that it's an interest, I think, for a lot of us. And I talked to a couple others who are going to be living there and other potentials, that we hope that maybe it would be started as an immersion program at 20 Wells. And kind of the, and I'll bet that's been talked about. And I don't know so many details about that kind of thing. But one problem that I think I have with my son is that he'll probably go in in first or second grade. And maybe if it's not started at the beginning, if that's possible, he may miss, he may be part of that section of kids who miss. Or he'll go to Grantsville Elementary, you know, for the French, but then not be able to go to his assigned school right by his house type of thing. So I just expressed that I think there's a lot of interest, maybe if it could at the beginning, so that those section of kids maybe don't get missed or who would be still able to go to 20 Wells if possible. But I know there's a lot into it, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Janine McKeeran. Sorry, did I say that correct? No, I slathered it.
I am Janine McHeckern. That's how you say that.
Thank you.
I am Janine McHeckern. I am a kindergarten teacher at Sterling Elementary. This year, most of my students do not recognize more than a few letters of the alphabet. I'm going to teach them the rest of those letters and their sounds. Then I will teach them to blend sounds together and begin reading. I will teach them to count to 20 and beyond. I will teach them addition and subtraction. I will teach them how to be good friends and a member of a community. I will teach these things because I am a good teacher. And I will do it all because I care about each one of my students. I care about their potential and I care about their growth. I am passionate about teaching. I am passionate about the progress of each of my students. However, please do not mistake this passion for a desire or a willingness to work outside of my contract times. Because outside of my contract times, I am passionate about my family, my church, my community, my health, my personal downtime, and so on. I started this year off with a determination to work 40 hours a week and be done. It is not going very well. I am in my fourth week of kindergarten and I am already feeling so far behind. I've already caved and worked weekends because I knew I wasn't ready for the week. I knew my students deserved a fully prepared teacher. Elementary teacher contracts run from 8:30 to 4 o'clock. The first bell rings at 8:40 and school ends at 3:35. This gives me 10 minutes before student contact and 25 minutes after school. Additionally, there is planning time while students are at encore each day. One of those times is mandated to be a team PLC meeting that leaves four 30-minute slots throughout the rest of the week. Wednesday afternoon, planning time is 12:30 to 4:00. But I have a mandated 45-minute PLC each Wednesday. So my three-and-a-half-hour planning block is cut down to two hours, 45 minutes. I am not including my lunch break because that should be sacred and solely dedicated to eating lunch and taking a break. Let's face reality, though. I chug a meal drink and spend that time sanitizing my tables and prepping the room for the second half of the day. Returning to those three daily chunks of time, before school, after school, and during encore, they are enough time for me to shuffle kids in and out of the classroom, use the bathroom, fill up my water bottle, respond to a few emails, make a copy, and simply take a breath. It's not enough time to sit down and plan out future lessons. That's where my two-hour and 45-minute Wednesday time comes in. During that time, I am expected to plan out thoughtful lessons with higher-order thinking in language arts, math, science, social studies, and social emotional learning. That is also the time I contact parents, analyze student data, plan interventions, plan how to better implement accommodations and differentiated learning, clean my classroom, and so on. Is it possible to effectively accomplish this in two hours and 45 minutes? A majority of teachers would say no. That's why we feel obligated to come to work early, stay late, and take work home with us. Teacher burnout is a real thing. So much is asked of us, but very little time is given to accomplish it all. It's going to continue breaking more and more teachers. It's time to make the change. I recently read a tweet that said, I can't even imagine what would happen if teachers and school staff only worked their contractual hours, only fulfilled their contractual duties. The entire education system is built on unpaid teacher overtime. I don't have the answers to this problem. It's a nationwide issue. What I do know, though, is how amazing our district is. I recognize and greatly appreciate the pay raises over the last three years. I recognize all the great things we do for our kids and our community. With that greatness, how can we as a district be the example? Can we blaze the trail and end this epidemic of expecting teachers to work beyond their contractual times? These are my personal thoughts. I am not here to officially represent anyone other than myself, but I can guarantee that many more feel the way I do. I will continue to comment each month at these meetings because I have more to say than five minutes allows. And I hope other teachers will do the same. It's well past time for teachers to stop working for free. I hope as a district, we can have some give and take so we arrive at a place where work time is enough to accomplish what is needed and personal time really is personal time. Now, if you'll excuse me, I won't be staying for the rest of the meeting because I have lesson plans I need to go home and write. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, our next person is Matt Hymus.
Thank you. I do have to say, that was, that was good public comment. I truly appreciate that, having been through a couple of public comments myself. I am Matt Hymus. I do serve on the State Board of Education for District 3, which covers West Valley City and Magna, so part of Granite School District, all of Twilla County School District, and Juab County School Districts as well. I do live in Twilla County School District, and it's a wonderful, wonderful place. I had the opportunity to reach out and meet with Dr. Rogers. I expected, I don't know what you expected. I expected 20 to 30 minutes, an hour and a half later, of just excellent conversation. I walked out of this building thinking what an amazing man he is, an amazing crew. I've seen the good things that Twilla County has done for its students here and families. And I really am appreciative of what you are doing here as a board. And so I appreciate that and just am happy to be here and show my support and gratitude. Thank you.
Okay, really quickly, I'm going to do something a little different. I'm just going to summarize our public patron comments. We had a comment about the 20 Wells DLI. We had a comment about teacher contract times. And then we had our state school board representative, Matt Hymus. So thank you very much for all of you that were able to make comments. Okay, let's move into consent items.
Could we take a couple items off of the, off those? 5.6 and 5.12, if we could, just discuss all separate. But I'll motion that we approve the.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Bob had something to.
I'd also like to pull 5.8 and 5.11.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else before we? Except now I got to remember. All right, I motion that we approve the consent items with the exception of 5.6, 5.8, 5.11, and 5.12.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Scott, seconded by Bob, to approve the consent agenda except for 5.6, 5.12, 5.8, and 5.11. All in, any discussion to that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, let's start 5.6. 150-mile contest.
I just have a hard time voting for all that out-of-state travel. So I would like to be able to vote no separately. And you will all vote for it because it's tradition.
Any discussion, anyone else? Bob, you have your mic on.
That was a mistake.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So which ones do you not agree with?
Reno.
Any of the, I'm sorry, just all of the out-of-state ones?
So Reno and California.
Okay. Can I ask, because you don't think we, they should be going out of state or?
I still think that we're spending an awful lot of money and committing a lot of district resources for any of those students that might apply to take kids out of state. So I think there's plenty of opportunities in state. But that's my opinion. And I mean, if it's a national kind of, you know, I supported the FFA, when it's kind of a national convention. But these kind of activities aren't necessarily that.
It isn't a concert band in national, is it a competition? Is it, or it's a? I bet that's the day they leave, don't you think? Okay.
To my knowledge, it's not national competitions.
They have, they have national competitions every week in Anaheim in the winter. It's a way to fill up hotel rooms.
Didn't we kind of come to a consensus as far as like what we're allowing each club, how much travel, like one out of state? Or did, it seems like we've had this discussion.
For those groups, I think we had talked about once in their four-year high school career, like the band could do one big one, but.
We do have that guideline, but we have several groups that request two to three activities out of state per year.
And I think that's why it's important, actually, you guys brought that up. So girls wrestling has never gone out of state because you can look at the spreadsheet. And then Twilla High Band, they do have a competition in St. George in November. And that's all that they've requested? So I.
It's okay, you guys can vote for it.
I know, I'm just, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page. And I was just trying to understand your perspective.
How far away is Reno? How, oh, okay. So it's more than St. George. I was just trying to think like, okay, that's fine. I don't, I'm in favor of it. I think kids need the experience, so I'm, but we need a motion, so.
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve 5.6 on the consent item.
It's been moved by Valerie, seconded by Camille, to approve 5.6 on the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, let's go to 5.8 next.
On 5.8, I just want to make a motion. Because of, you know, the newness of the committees and things that we're assigned to, I would like to just table this until January so that we can at least finish out what we maybe started with the committees and things. And so my motion would be to table this item until the January meeting.
It's been moved by Bob, seconded by Julie, Julia, to table 5.8 until January. Is there any discussion to this motion?
I just have one discussion, or one question for Bob, rather. If we table it until January, do you want it back under the consent items? Or would you rather it as a discussion item in January?
Well, you know, I think ideally, maybe it would be a good thing if some, if as board members, we could talk about, maybe, you know, we have an expertise here or we have some, you know, maybe, maybe that could be a discussion. I don't care. I just think that we, you know, we need to maybe finish up. For instance, I'll use today, I met with USU and I want to, I want to follow through with a couple of the things that, that are in the works to maybe recruit teachers to our district, you know. And so that's my main, that's my main reason is just to be able to maybe finish, follow through with a few things.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So that, so I'll put that as a, okay, discussion. Okay, let's go to 5.11, approval of bid for Ibapa Manufactured Home.
All I'm, all I'm looking for is information. You know, as we started talking about the new Ibapa school, I wasn't on board when that was all, you know, I wasn't on the board at that point in time. You know, being a past educator in the district and things, I know those building, those manufactured homes that sit out there have been remodeled recently and one's vacant at this point in time being remodeled. And so I question, you know, the, I guess I'm questioning the necessity or help me understand the reasoning behind that. It's not, it's not that I'm definitely opposed to it. It's not, it's not that I'm definitely opposed to it or anything else, I just don't know, I just don't know the background of this. That'd be great, Mike, thank you.
And while Mike comes up, it's very similar on five twelve, Bob. I mean, it, I didn't feel like there was a lot of context there, so, since you're up here, don't run away. That's-
Alright, so I'll have to remember back. At the time we were, when it was decided to build the new elementary school, um, it was decided that, that we needed the ability to house three teachers out there. And with the current setup we have, there was only the ability to house two. And so, what was approved in Capital Outlay for last fiscal year was to do a duplex home. But then when the, so I think the budget for that was two hundred and fifty thousand, which we thought was gonna be enough, but then when construction material prices had their increase, we, we put it out to bid during that cut time, and it came back almost five hundred thousand. So we, you know, stopped that and, and tried again. I talked to some of the different suppliers, and one of the issues we had is because of the demand for homes, the manufactured homes, they're not doing custom, they're not doing duplexes, they're just pumping out as many as they can right now. And so, that's when we decided to go back and rather do, rather than do the duplexes, just to do the, the single homes. And that came in with, I think, the budget, I have to go back and find it.
Yeah, it's on, it's in here, at one fifty-one for a single.
There's currently not a home, a manufactured home that is vacant. We have two teacherages there. One is the old blue house, which has been refurbished and multiple times, and actually has significant amounts of black mildew and mold in walls. They've tried to mitigate that, so that one is just about at its lifetime max. The other one, the one that Albert was in for a while, we have a teacher living there. We have three teachers in Ibapah. One lives out in the area, and the other two, we've, we felt like, in order to, historically, in order to recruit teachers to go there, we've had to, you know, sweeten the pot and, and pay for relocation. So, this one is so that we can have two more modern, um, I know we've done a little bit of remodeling, not huge like we have in the blue house, with the, just upgrading some of the flooring and carpets and paint and stuff like that for the manufactured home. So this one would be that second manufactured home. So we'd have two of those, and we'd still have that blue house, but it really needs to be eventually torn down, Bob.
Is there some economies of doing it now while you're building the school? Are, are you able to build a foundation, or water, or can?
A little bit, we have the contractor on site.
Or something. I just wondered if you had some economies.
There's a little bit. They have given us some numbers. That's where I kind of threw in there, depending on what kind of foundation we put, whether it's a, a compacted road base, or actually put in a, a pad. It is the contractor who's on-site that would be able to do that, so there would be no additional mobilization fee. They could handle it with all the equipment that's there. I haven't got a budget from anybody else to come in and do it apart from that, but there would be savings since they're there working anyways. It's just, they're bringing a little more dirt, or a little more concrete here and there, and they're doing it while they're there. So that's, then that's why we decided to do it when we did, is because we figured it would be the most advantageous time and the, you know, the least expensive, since we were doing a decent amount of work there already. We already do have the water stubbed out, and the power stubbed over to that area. We did that earlier this fall, or, excuse me, earlier this spring. Another issue we've had with the blue house is the location of the septic and the well aren't ideal. And so I, it would be nice to move the septic system, if we're gonna keep the blue house in operation, to move it further away from the, the well that's in the current school.
And, and like I said, I'm not disagreeing. I just, I just wanted to have some background on this, because what, I know that Mrs. Bateman lives in her own home, just a stone's throw away. And then, my understanding is there was only one teacher living in the blue house, I think, right now, and the other one's driving from Anna, wherever Antelope Flat is, something Antelope Flat.
Near Calio.
Is that, I, I don't know.
And so currently, one of the reasons, I think she wanted to get in earlier, but because of the, the white house being tied to the well that we're working on for the new school, that house isn't available until the well work gets completed. So I think she, the intent is to get her in there as soon as possible. And so that was the idea. We were just told to get three houses out there, and we thought that was the best way to, to do it at the time, and then we weren't sure what was happening with the-
So, so the blue house is staying? That's the only thing I can remember it by, is the blue house, so I apologize.
Right.
The one that Ms. West is in right now, or?
That would be, I, I mean, to me, that would be a decision that the board would make at that time. Our idea was to get three new updated homes that were all current. Like Superintendent said, that, the blue house is getting, there are some issues with it that we thought it would be better just to, while we were out there doing all those. That's what we were hoping, we'd get the duplex, and it would be a, a cheaper and an economy of scale by lumping it together, but-
Really, it's, it's, it depends on future. What happens if, you know, when, when Marilyn left, she didn't need a house because she already lived there. So if we can attract a local person that lives there, then we'll only need two houses for the other two teachers. So, uh, what we wanted to do is replace that blue house with, uh, with some more updated mobile houses, and, and, in the, in the future, knock it down. But we're not able to do that because, because of the construction, the white house isn't available yet because of the well. But, wh- what we'd really like to do is move those two teachers to the newer places, and really, if you've been in a blue house, Kevin will tell you, it's, it's pretty hard. I think it's three or four times been redone and gutted, but there's a lot of black mold, mildew, I don't know. I mean, we're, we're wondering about the condition of that home long-term, but for now, it was gonna stay until we got the teacherages situation set up. So ideally, we need three, but we may only need two if we can keep someone out there that's, that lives there.
Well, and, and my only other comment, and, 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 please, I'm not saying I'm opposed, but the only other comment was the same issue that we got into, the Wendover housing. You know, is, in, in providing Wendover, in providing housing, you get into be, having problems with renovation or replacement and all those type of things. And so, that was another question that had come to my, my mind, so.
That's a good question, because we certainly heard from previous board that we wanted to get out of the landlord business, and we did. But the discussion stopped there because, uh, they felt like with West Wendover and Wendover, and having enough housing options, teachers had other options. As far as options in Ibapah, we just haven't been able to recruit teachers out there without giving, uh, housing an option, so. But ideally, we'd love to get out of that business of owning homes as well, but we're just not sure we can attract a teacher to stay out there long-term. When we had Marilyn, Bob, it, it was nice and long, and she stayed there long-term, but we've had kind of a, a frequent turnover out there, and, so. I don't know if Mark, Mark, you, you haven't, you, as being the most recent Grantsville area director, a lot of this, I mean, as we were talking about recruiting teachers and getting people to come out there, that was very influential, and, and them staying in that very remote area, even more remote than Wendover.
Do, do we provide that form at free of charge? I, as part of the deal? I mean, do we let them live there free?
We don't charge rent, but they pay utilities.
That's fair. Well, I, I could see how that could be appealing, and especially being in Ibapah. Yeah, uh, you know, I'll make a motion, and then we can at least, more discussion, but I would motion that we approve five point eleven from the consent items.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Scott, seconded by Camille, to approve the bid for Ibapah Manufactured Homes. Is there any more discussion to the motion?
So, I just have a question. So, will there just be two houses once the blue house, if we take that down because of the mold and stuff? Will there just be two, or will there still be three?
We're planning on there, white one remaining. We have the new water line to go into there and everything as well. So there should be, with this one, there will be three, plus the blue house. But there'll be three homes all on the east side of the school.
How new is the white house, or old?
I'm not sure.
But it's not in the same condition as the blue house?
No, it's a manufactured home. The blue house is a stick built on a foundation. But I could get you, if I, I can go reference that, how old it is. It's in the, it's in the capital, uh,
I guess I'm more curious the condition of it than the, the age, I guess.
Yeah, they did, last year, they did new flooring in the bathrooms, new carpet, I believe. It's a fairly typical modular home.
It's probably, it's probably late eighties or early nineties. It's not, it's not very old.
Yeah, I think you're, you're right.
So, so right now, we've got two teachers who are gonna live in, two of them, because one, one teacher has, lives out there, just. But we're worried about in the future.
We're wanting to have three in case.
Camille, did you have anything? Okay.
I thought we were voting.
Uh, um, all in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Okay, five point twelve.
Uh, five twelve, I, I guess, similar vein, just since you're up here. It's just as, there was a reference to an attachment that I didn't see. It was not included, or I, something, but, um, so there, I, there weren't any other bids shown. And typically, when we're approving the, you know, for a contract, we usually see. It just, it was a little different than I've seen in the past.
So yeah, there was, I think the attachment that was sent, and I think because it got lumped in with the consent, the attachment didn't get attached. Because this one was under our, um, construction manager, it was Westland Construction, so we wouldn't have got multiple bids. It was, I mean, they received the multiple bids, and they, you know, with them, we vetted, and then, you know, found the lowest responsible bidder for each of those. And so, we only had the one proposal that, or it's, you know, the one through Westland Construction. Uh, so that's why there wasn't multiple bids necessarily. Each, you know, for the electrical, let's say, they got three or four bids from different contractors, but because they're our general contractor, the bids worked through them, and they handled the bidding, and then they kind of, they give us the number. We work with them on it, but.
So they were selected through a process that we ran about a year ago, and then when they looked at the cost, that's when it came back as eight million, and we said, ew, pump the brakes. Is, you know, are we gonna put transportation there? What do we do? We need transportation facility and a warehouse facility. And, um, and then they've been reworking the numbers to make it more affordable than the eight million.
Right, and that's the one reason we got them on board before just hard bidding it with the architect. If we had hard bid with the architect, we wouldn't have been stuck, but we would have got the bids on bid day, and we could have taken it or leave it. Now where we have the contractor on board, they've been helping us, as we're designing, finding the most economical ways to do things. They've been talking to the different subcontractors to make sure that, you know, supplies, materials are available, and, and the best way to do it. And so, Westland was approved, like I said, like Superintendent said, last year, for the transportation warehouse remodel. And so this is done underneath that contract, and so they were the ones that put it out to bid, and received all of the, um, the bids from the different subcontractors.
And the purpose of this building, remind me, or just for?
Warehouse, warehouse, to, to replace the warehouse that's going to, um, that's behind Twila Tech that they purchased. It was gonna be transportation and food service and warehouse, all that together, but we switched where we're moving, uh, transportation. So, i- it's hard for them to make a decision without actually seeing the breakdown. It's my understanding that most of that is bringing it up to fire code? Is that, do you have that with you, Mike?
Yeah, um, I don't know if you have that, Sue, it was in the email I sent to Jackie, if it could be sent out, but, yeah, we were about three hundred thousand dollars just for the fire sprinklers, because they have to totally be redone. You're about six hundred thousand dollars for all the electrical, for a new fire alarm, all new lighting, security, access control, cameras, network.
Is there, even if you have it right now, I, I'm, I guess I'm just speaking personally, but I'm a little... I don't know, I'm, I'm like, Bob, I, I'm not sure. I, I haven't had enough time to think through that, but, is there a timeline you're operating under, Mike? I mean, do you have a deadline, or do we need to let it?
We'd like to get going as quick as possible. We do have, you know, contractors kind of tentatively lined up. They know that they're not totally, it's not totally a go yet, but they're chomping at the bit to get moving.
We do have a timeline that we have to get out, uh, of the warehouse and the transportation building by next August.
And before winter hits, as much as possible we can get done is a, a big benefit. As we, you know, get, everything's more difficult when it's cold, and hopefully snowy this year, but everything's just much harder to work on the outside. So we have, there are a lot of pieces in part, and, um, if you do remember, the initial budget estimate from June was about three point eight million. So we did come in under that, about the three point three. We do have that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside as kind of a contingency for unknown, to cover things that, as we dig into a sixty-year-old building, we're just not exactly sure what we're gonna find. Um, if anything doesn't get used in that, that just comes back to the district.
Sure.
So we felt like, you know, the number was a decent number. Um, you know, when you look at the-
We're moving from, how many square feet do we currently have in, in our warehouse?
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand to ninety thousand.
And is this the building that, um, they were talking, the architects or the builders we're talking about will be able to store? I mean, we need this warehouse basis for the high school construction.
It's the better of the two. We've got, we own six forty-nine and six forty-seven. This is the better one of the two, with the least amount of upgrades needed.
Okay, you've helped me. I, I'm, I, I would be, I'll make a motion, since I'm the one that pulled it, and then you, these guys can talk. But I'll motion that we do approve five point one-two for, on the consent items.
I second it.
It's been moved by Scott, seconded by Bob, to approve five point one-two, for the consent, uh, from the consent agenda. Is there any discussion to that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, on to action items, six point one, TSSA framework. Lark Reynolds is our point.
Okay, can I, just one point from our discussion just previously, and that was, Michael, shake his head if I'm wrong here, but your question about the storing of the materials, my understanding is that six forty-seven, we were talking about doing that, and not six forty-nine. Six forty-nine is the warehouse.
It doesn't need to be yet, okay.
Yeah, but, just wanted to, in case that answer wasn't given, sorry.
That's correct.
Alright, uh, sorry for that, but six point one, uh, framework, I'll, I'll save our history lesson that we, because we talked about it last time, so sorry to the, the public if they wanna look up our, our discussion from last time. I just thought I'd start with our current plan. TSSA framework, as you know, um, we decided, are we gonna make any tweaks to it this year? So, um, the document that's attached in there has our language from last year, and, uh, really, what we talked about last meeting, I just put in there in, in yellow, but, uh, in case there happens to be another idea behind it. I know that in, in a meeting that, uh, Camille and, and Bob and I attended at USBA, we had a conversation on the way back, and part of it, we could simplify it with simple language of anything that improves, hopefully I'm saying that right, you can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, improves, uh, education. That'd be one way of simplifying, but this is what we had in there, just, so I, I thought I'd leave it open for you all as far as what you felt like for changing the framework. And then, I really apologize, I didn't attach this. You probably got an email from me just a little bit ago with a, a PDF in there. And, uh, that's actually what we've given principals when they give you the plan to adopt. I thought it was important you see that template as well, because, um, I tried to make sure it mirrored your goals in there of items that the money can be, can be spent on, so. My only point in pointing that out, that it was in emails, if you have any suggested changes, please let us know before we send it out to principals, is the reason why, but, any questions on the framework, or the idea?
I don't have any questions, but, oh, sorry, can I go? But I do like the idea of generalizing it, um, because I think, I think it would be nice for the principals to have that option if they have more ideas that have to do with improving student outcome. I really like generalizing it that way and giving the principals that freedom.
I'm looking for a motion.
I'm, I move that we accept, well, can I go back? Let me make a statement first. The one, the one thing that we wanted in, in, in the prior meeting was, is that we wanted some flexibility so they could hire instructional co- The one, the one thing that we wanted in, in, in the prior meeting was, is that we wanted some flexibility so they could hire instructional coaches or things like that. And if you look at the application that was emailed, and I know that you can't see that from the audience, but if you look at the application, it, it specifically talks about instructional coaches. So therefore, I move that we approve the TSSA framework for the school, for the school year of twenty twenty-one, no, twenty-one, twenty-two, excuse me, got my dates wrong.
Uh, so, so does that include, like, in that motion, are you including the, um?
The flexibility?
Yeah.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, I'll second it then.
It's been moved by Bob, seconded by Valerie to approve the TSSA framework for school year twenty-one, twenty-two. Any more discussion to that motion? Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes.
Can I ask one clarifying question, question? Is Ian, is it adopting it as was written there with the nine bullet points and adding a tenth of, or is it eliminating any of them and just make sure I understood? Sorry. So yeah, as he has it up here, we had the nine bullet points, so we add a tenth about the flexibility?
Well, I think, like you said, the bottom one, um, because the community, the trust lands funds is all about students, right? In learning and student outcome, so I feel like if you put, um, student outcome, then it covers both of those. Does that?
That in the motion, okay. So student outcome is, is nine, change it to?
I mean, Bob made the bottom, but.
The additional consideration where it says expenses geared towards improving student in outcome. Is that what you're talking about, Valerie?
Yes, but I, when, I guess what I'm saying is if, if we put that, then do we need nine?
Yes, because.
I think you would need nine.
Could you just add that last consideration as number ten?
So then just make it ten.
Make it a ten, a number ten.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And we'll include that in the motion, right?
Okay, do we need to revote? Would that change your vote?
Number ten would be expenses geared towards improving student outcomes.
Oh, oh, I gotcha, I gotcha, additional consideration.
Or do we need a new motion?
Sorry, I thought that was on there because we did the proposed changes, so.
We probably better make another motion, so.
Okay.
I'll make a substitute motion on the TSSA framework, that we include the bottom statement as number ten, expenses geared towards improving student outcomes.
And I'll second the substitution motion. Is that right?
It's been moved by Bob, seconded by Valerie for the substitute motion. Is there any discussion to that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Okay, six point two revised policy five zero two one, admissions and attendance compulsory education. This is a first read. Marion O'Bourn, oh, there you are.
Hi, and the reason for this policy change is to just bring us into compliance with the federal government for our homeless students, as they cannot just be dropped at the ten day, which is our, the regular policy for students, because those students are so transient and in and out, that we have to do additional due diligence with those students, and also with our special education students, in order to, uh, meet their needs and make sure that they have, that we have done what we can in reaching out to meet the needs of those students, so that's the reason for the policy change. Any questions?
You're not necessarily looking for a second read, then?
Just if you want to. I took it, the information on it, it's taken directly from, from the law.
Directly from the.
And the only difference is the homeless part, because we've, we've had everything else.
Yeah, just the homeless part, and there's a small amount on this, with the special education students on it. It's just those two. Everything else remains the same for all the rest of our students. We just need that in order for, on the, our attendance, as we're tracking the attendance, to be able to make that accommodation.
And the updated legal reference from Utah Code, R two seven seven, so administrative rule, that clarifies that in, the language in green.
Okay, so Valerie, and then Camille, oh.
I was gonna make a motion, but if you have more questions?
I just, I actually, because I'm trying to remember with, I can't remember where we were, um, but somewhere in the, my head is telling me that legislators were looking at this rule anyways, and they were gonna change some things. Have you heard anything?
I have not heard anything that. I have been working with the state on this rule.
Okay.
And they never said anything. I worked with Jeff Hojeda, who's over the homeless at the state level, and then I've been working with Matt Jackson, looking at the special ed.
It was something about attendance, though, and, and I'm clearly not anything with the homeless, so I'm sure it was something different. I just can't remember.
They are talking about attendance with the whole, uh, in, 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 in light of the juvenile justice concerns about compulsory attendance, which is very interesting, as far as what you could refer to the juvenile court, but it wasn't my understanding, it was specific to these changes.
Okay, that's what I, I wasn't sure.
There could be new changes coming to compulsory attendance.
Yeah.
It seems like every year there are.
New ones that come up, and that's what I was thinking too with the next legislative session, that we might see some additional changes, okay.
Valerie?
Um, are we, can I make a motion? Now I'm, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's great. Um, I move that we approve policy, the changes to policy five zero two one, admission and, and attendance.
It's been moved by Valerie, seconded by Julia, to approve revised policy five zero two one, admissions and attendance compulsory education. Any discussion to that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Six point three policies for three thousand business section of the policy manual. This is amazing reading. Lark, would you please enlighten us?
Glad you said amazing. I know it's a lot, um, appreciate you doing that. This is the model policies from the state, as you know, we've been updating those. And, uh, this happens to be, other than the few, few of your first policies in there, which kind of finished up our procurement one from last time, now we're getting into the, uh, construction, so timely, as we were talking about, these are the recommended, uh, construction, model policies from the state board. There was a very few, I don't think we actually made any changes to what was recommended in there, so.
The only question I have is on three zero two nine.
Okay.
I don't recall. I, I, I don't recall that requirement in the past that we have to, and, and nor do I recall us doing that. Uh, it, it calls out that you, before purchasing the property, that we have to meet with the local entity, the Department of Transportation, the electric company, the gas company, the phone company, I mean, all these, and, and I don't ever remember doing that, and is that a new requirement, or is that just something we've missed in the past?
That's a good question. I'm, I'm looking over at my experts over here if we've, that might be something they have to look at.
Because it says even before you purchase the property, you, you have to do that, so I was a little surprised by that rule, or, but, I mean, we're not buying any property right now, but I guess.
Yeah, I.
But you say that's, it's out of the state code.
Can I check on that and get back to you?
Well, if it's out of state code, it is what it is, and we're not buying any property today, so we're all right. I just was surprised by that.
We may, we may need to change a few of our practices in terms of what we've been doing.
Yeah, I mean.
Julie actually had a good question for me that I'm researching, and that's, speaking of bidding, and here we were talking about opening bids, it specifically said the school board, and so I need to check with Patrick and see if that needs to be done here for you all in an open meeting, or is it something you can designate and bring back, so.
So that leads me to believe that we should do these as a second read.
At least those two.
I'd, I'd do them all, just let everybody look at them and.
I think so, I, just because there's a lot of changes, and not that I, I mean, I trust you, and I know that they're the model policies, but I think, um, just because we have some questions and some differences, it might not be a bad idea.
Make that motion.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Before you make that.
Hold on, Scott.
I do know that, um, some of these are related to new legislation. If you'll remember, the governor's office and the legislature sent out a survey that Ian and Mike and Lark had to fill out around school construction. Do you remember that? Because there's been problems in other districts. None known to us here, but statewide, I know that the legislature has expressed concern about the rising cost and controlling pre-construction, you know, kinds of things, so I know some of those, I can't point exactly which ones, but I know it's been a, a frequent topic at the legislature.
And, and again, I think that's still another reason why to do them as a second read. I'm sure most of them will just stay the way that they are, but I think it's a good idea, uh.
I think there'll be more coming in the new session.
I agree as well. So I motion that we, um, do you want me to list each of them?
Bring six-three to a next read and call it good.
Thank you, so moved.
It's been, oh, I don't have a second. She moved, you're second, okay. It's been moved by Camille, seconded by Julia, to move six point three to a second read. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Six point four, special education policies and procedures.
All right, good evening. How are you guys? Um, I come tonight to ask you to look at revision of all of our special ed policies, the ten thousand section of our board policy. Um, the special ed department at USBE approached us last year and said, all districts are going to have to go back and make sure that there is a policy and procedure manual in place, um, to allow for us to receive the flow-through funds from IDA, which is federal money. And, um, through this process, as a department, we started back in January, and we went through our current policies that are in place right now, and made sure that the current model poli- policy that, or the model policy that was sent to us, uh, was addressing all of the, the policies that we already have in place, and then what was new out of that. And I, I did not bring up, there's a couple, there's three different sections that just have a brief statement in the new model policy. It's section eight, eight point F, that talks about the prohibition of mandatory medication in the instance of like a special ed referral. We can't, as a district, require parents to seek out, um, medical intervention through medication, um, before we go through with a referral. It's a, um, Dustin's pulling it right up right now, but it's just a short section, um, just about a three-sentence paragraph. The, did you find it, Dustin? It's Roman numeral eight, point F. And right now, as it stands, this is a PDF version of, um, the recommended model policy that was sent to us, and that's why it looks a little bit different than other policies that do come through for board approval.
And for clarification, let me add, Tamsin.
Yes.
The rulemaking process, uh, policymaking process for special ed is a different process with a different committee than the USBE Rules Committee, I understand. It, it, it eventually gets to rules and the whole entire group, but it involves Leah Voorhees, or, um,
Leah.
Dr. Voorhees, and, uh, a different committee, so.
Then we also have to align to IDA and, and current Utah special ed rule, which is referenced here.
So our ten policies, we've got the ten thousand one through ten thousand ten, are, according to the state, woefully inadequate to cover all of the federal guidelines. And so this would actually, for lack of a better word, be a policy manual within our policy manual that would replace those, does that, if that makes sense?
And, and there were just these three sections, and I'm sorry that it's not coming up, so there was that section, the, um, Roman numeral eight point F, that, that talked about the prohibition of mandatory medication. Um, Roman numeral nine point C, which discusses, um, charter schools and districts having, um, being able, being capable of, uh, forming an, uh, MOU in order to serve students and provide special education services, which was not addressed prior. And then the third section was Roman numeral nine, um, point K, which, uh, talks about USDB, uh, Utah schools for the deaf and blind, being able to be provided space within our district to provide the service and the programs that they do provide to the students who are deaf and blind. Um, so those were the only three different sections, like I said, there's, uh, small paragraphs that, that address those issues. And other than that, I've went through, as a, and as a department, we went through and compared to each, you know, ten thousand, ten thousand one, ten thousand two, made sure that it was addressed in this policy. Um, you guys can go for a second read, if you would like to push it forward, and if you guys have questions tonight, I can answer that. But otherwise, if you feel like we're ready to move forward, we can move forward.
So our deadline for posting this is October eighteenth, and your board meeting is October twelfth, so you do have time for second reading before we have to get that uploaded on our website.
Because I do know it's large.
I was just saying, a second read might be good, so that all the special ed teachers could.
Have time to go through it.
You know, be familiar with it.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I will go ahead and make a motion that, um, the special education policies and procedures manual goes out for a second read.
Second.
It's been moved by Camille, seconded by Bob, to, uh, for special education policies and procedural manual for a second read. Any discussion? I just have, does that give you guys enough time?
Absolutely, absolutely, because I don't, I don't feel like there will be any major changes to it.
Okay.
Like I said, these were the, the pieces that the, the state has come back and said.
Because these are model policies, yeah.
Are required for us to be able to receive those funds. We didn't deviate from them at all. Um, but it does deviate from our current policy, which I was proposing to put the policy and procedure manual in place of all of those policies, except for the service animal policy, because this manual does not address service animals. And, um, is there anything else you want me to follow up on?
All righty, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, superintendent report.
Okay, I'm gonna, if I can, Madam President, just sit here instead of stand up there, or if you want me to be more formal, I, I could, but I'm just taking the lead after Lark. Um, I got three items to talk with you tonight. The first one is very quick, just to chat with the superintendent. A shout out to Marie and Dustin, Matt Orlob, who was here. Uh, there were several people here, not a large crowd, but this is the first one we did on, uh, September sixteenth at six PM, and we talked about, um, the, uh, portrait of a graduate from Utah, which is kind of the end goal, and what we could do to make it our own, and we started talking about school improvement and our strategic planning. And, uh, it was recorded, and, um, Marie did a good job of setting some ground rules, and we had several questions that came in online. Uh, several comments and questions in the, in the audience here, and we're gonna do this every, uh, month, once a month, just so that we can, uh, encourage our, gosh, PTAs and community councils and our parents and staff members to, uh, visit. It's not, you know, so I spent about ten to fifteen minutes, uh, topping, talking about a topic, and then want to listen to feedback and, and have this feedback help kind of drive where we're headed in the next ten to twenty years. So the next one is on October seventh at six o'clock, and you can sign in through Facebook, or you can come here live and, uh, and, uh, we'll get, we'll bring some cookies if more people will come live, because otherwise, I'm gonna have to just tell this whole group, all right, you guys have to come, so I'm not here alone.
Just curious, did many people speak out?
So, yeah, there were, there were, uh, five or six comments here, and then there were a couple of questions online. And so it wasn't huge, but of course, it was just the first time, and it also, we were competing with, uh, of course, the, the leadership training for school board, and we were competing with other sports venues and that kind of a thing, so we think that the first week is, is, uh, and, and we think the time is the right time. So we're gonna continue to do that, as well as other efforts to get some ideas around our strategic plans, uh, which would include focus groups or cottage town hall, you know, type meetings. But anyway, so I would invite you, uh, and I might even ask you to come and present a specific topic, and, uh, what we're trying to do is if people have questions about the topic, great. If they have other questions that we can't get to, or we run out of time, it's only an hour, six to seven, we're, we were out of here before seven o'clock, so, uh, we just want to keep that as an ongoing feature, so. Any questions about that? All right, second up, the JLC priority list. Uh, I want everybody to know that we've got two jail, voting members on JLC. JLC is the Joint Legislative Committee, and it is made up of superintendents and school board members, uh, across the state, and a representative group of both. And we get together and, uh, And we get together and uh, and have, uh, of course, a delegate assembly, and we uh, set legislative priorities. And that gives our representatives like Lexi Cunningham and Richard Stoll, and you guys know, uh, Richard and Lexi, um, an opportunity to advocate with legislators our positions. And so this is a list of the twenty twenty-one priorities, and I'm, I'm not gonna read the whole list, other than we've gotta have commitment to enrollment growth in the base budget and some kind of an inflationary uh, factor. Uh, everything else in government and in the world understands that inflationary factor. And we would really like the legislature to go back and consider adjustments to the truth in taxation. Not that we wouldn't have truth in taxation, but that there's an automatic inflationary um, piece of that with the certified rate as it goes up and down. So that's another important thing. And then rainy day fund as a part of the Uniform School Fund. You know, economists are predicting, um, uh, even though our recovery uh, from the pandemic has been pretty good and economy sounds strong, it's very prudent to have a rainy day fund. And we're in a conservative state that, that manages uh, money very well. So uh, you can look at ongoing current education fund revenues. We're asking collectively for a minimum of a four percent WPU increase. Um, it'll be interesting to see, because there's also discussion about tax relief or, or um, you know, cutting taxes. And, and we certainly understand that as well, uh, and what to do with some of the surplus uh, funds. There's also, uh, we, uh, a, a request here for increase to necessary existing small schools, which we have several NEST schools, which would continue to provide funding for those schools that are, you know, more expensive to operate. You can look at the one-time revenue. We're, we're asking for, and this is not us, our small group, but the state group, we're asking for forty million in one-time funds for COVID-driven expenses related to health and safety and then additional thirty million for one-time um, funds for school building security upgrades. And we've already made a, 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 under Ian's leadership and, and Steve and, and Mike, we've already made uh, quite progress. If you've been to our elementary schools, most of them now have a camera and a, and a secure vestibule. So we, we're much further along in that discussion, and I think our security assessment really helped with that. And then you can look at policy requests beyond the money. And that's um, accountability dashboard for the purposes of school accountability, rather than just looking at school grading. Income tax dedicated revenue source to fund public education. And we support that. There were some changes made, you know, in the last session. And uh, but we wanna reiterate that we still wanna have some of that funding earmarked coming to education. Restoring the ability for local tax entities to impose impact fees. That's been a topic several times with us and in other districts, especially when you're experiencing a lot of growth. So uh, and I think in nineteen ninety-six, there was legislation passed that prohibited school districts from imposing impact fees, but communities could still do that. And so we're asking, uh, and we've got Representative Nelson, who uh, we've been speaking to about carrying that um, that legislation. We will face, honestly, some pushback with Realtor and other, and construction group and lobby. But it's something that the, the, um, the JLC felt really strongly about. Uh, efforts to um, we oppose efforts to move uh, funding of public education into private uh, interests through vouchers, tax credits, other means. And uh, so you can see, these are our, and I'm gonna share these with the staff. These have been approved by that, the Legislative, Joint Legislative Committee in the Delegate Assembly. And I think we had Camille there, and Bob, you were there, and who else? Did we have somebody else at Delegate Assembly? And Lark. So uh, anything else you guys would add on that? I, I just wanted to get that on the record, showing that we gave an update on legislative priorities with the board.
I just have, you know, we've been, since I've been on the board, training about talking to our legislator, legislators. And I know um, the very first one I went to, or the first time, I think, talked to somebody and they said, we need a copy of the, I think it was um, Representative Nelson, I need a copy of this. I know we did a legislative dinner, breakfast with our, I mean, we, they just emphasize how much the school board, that's part of our responsibilities, is to talk to our legislators. So they always say, do you have your legislators and senators' phone numbers? Are you calling them? So I'm just reminding all of us as a board to make sure that these priorities and our, do you think we'll do a breakfast?
We, I just sent you an email today.
Oh, sorry.
Breakfast, uh, just heard back from Senator Sandel today. We did a doodle poll. It's scheduled for November twelfth at uh, eight AM at Tuilie Tech. So all board members would be invited to that. It's not a public meeting, it's the K sixteen alliance. So between us, Utah State and uh, Tuilie Tech, we'll have that legislative breakfast.
Oh, good.
And all of our legislators, including, I think, Matt, and we've invited him as well. Because you understand that when it comes to budget recommendations, there's a recommendation, of course, JLC. But the real budget recommendation comes from the school board, the state school board, and also from the governor's office. And then they get with the legislature and it's kind of, I don't know, uh, massaged and compromised and, and debated. And that's where we usually get our base budget bill out of. So we felt like we needed to invite Matt as our voice at, on the state board level. And so that's November twelfth, if you mark it on your calendars. Uh, any other questions about our legislative party? So we will send it out to Merrill and, to all of our, uh, our two representatives and our two senators. But we usually wait until USBA prints out a um, a brochure. This is just kind of their, it's not really a draft, it's final, but they actually go out and, and, and publish a really nice brochure, trifold.
I know Merrill was like to, sorry, Representative Nelson had just said, uh, sent, email it to me. So I think it's, I think as school board members, it would, I don't know, be nice to email it to them, right?
It never hurts if, if, uh, if we all talk the same language. That's part of what the policy, y- you know, they hear a lot of requests about money, especially when they have surplus. But we can't forget talking about these policy uh, interests and our positions on certain things. Because a lot of these are gonna be tied to other, whether it's a voucher bill, or whether it's a, a bill around the certified tax rate to include uh, um, uh, inflationary adjustment. Uh, you know, it's important that we talk to them about those issues and how it impacts us, so.
I would just caution though, that we wait until Thursday, we have our meeting with um, for regional training with USBA. And I'm pretty sure we'll get the final draft, because it's already been approved from the delegates. Um, and I would just wait until you receive that before we email it out, just so that we have a consistent message. Uh, for example, two hundred and fifty million dollars is gonna be asked for capital costs for this year. Um, they have a billion dollars in surplus, and we could use two hundred million dollars to help build schools and offset some of the increased costs. So I think that's something important to bring up and to discuss, but um,
It will be interesting to see that.
We wanna keep a consistent message.
Because with that money, there will be a debate between districts that are growing and building schools and districts that aren't growing. But my comment is that those districts who aren't seeing new schools probably have aging facilities that they could put that money into to do uh, rebuilds or refurbish. So we're hoping that we're gonna get an infusion of money into capital, because uh, we all know that construction costs are up, so.
So is that date correct on it? Cause it says adopted on August twenty-second, twenty twenty.
That is cor- um, it should be twenty twenty-one. I think they missed that.
So actually, I think that's an old, um, pol- it's an old priorities from actually last year. So I sent the superintendent the new ones for this year and for next year's legislative session. So then that way you can review them. If you want, I can send them to you as well.
This is the one that's on the USBA.
Cause it says twenty twenty-one above that.
Right, so it was for last year's legislative session.
Oh.
So it's what everyone's working on for this year, but there's new ones that were just adopted in twenty twenty-one, going for twenty twenty-two.
So is there more on the newest one?
Uh, not more, but they're, they're a lot the same, but instead of a four percent WPU, it's a five percent.
Okay.
Um, and the idea is so that we can retain teachers and continue to, you know, continue um, increasing their salary. If you look at the Utah roadmap from the governor's office, the goal is to get to a starting salary of sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand to begin.
In every district.
And of course, our approach when we've done that isn't just to move beginning salaries up, but to put that, we would go from the fifty-two, whatever it is now, to if we went to the sixty, that means everybody, we re-raised that same amount, so. We support that, because our teachers work hard, as we've heard tonight in public comment. And uh, so anyway, uh, we'll wait till we meet on our regional meeting and we'll get the updated list. I apologize, I thought that this was the current list, but it's not on their website. So, okay. Anything else on that one?
The, the five percent, the, the idea behind the five percent on that uh, ongoing revenue was to, you know, they're going to continue to ask that so that they do get to the sixty thousand. That's, that's the intent, so.
That's correct. That's my understanding. You know, it takes about three and a half, three to three and a half, just to maintain operations with our salary schedules moving up. So three and a half is, is really enough to just give one increment. And so if we wanna do something more on that to the base, then we would have to have above that three and a half level. Is that correct, Lark, roughly?
Say that again.
Three and a half is, is what we have calculated, that we essentially need to just maintain current operations with our salary schedules? Moving down?
I believe that's what they said district-wide. I
Okay. That might be, that might be the average per.
I mean statewide.
State, yeah, yeah. So, and then the last thing I have, just really quickly, is I typically in this month, update you on what our enrollment looks like. And I wanna bring up this new page. So a shout out to Dave uh, Warburton and the IT Department under Dustin's direction. So the website here, um, uh, we can give you, it's just a link, uh, and we can give you that link. It's not a, it's not a public link, but there's no identifying information in here for students. So, I mean, it, uh, but this is just brand new. You can, let's hover over, um, oh, let's say Grantsville Elementary. So you, this is the recap, but you can go into Grantsville Elementary and click on that, and you can see class sizes. So we haven't had that feature in the past, and I've reported to you, but now it's automated. This is tied to um, Aspire. So when enrollment changes, which it's a moving target, we get kids moving in and out every day. You'll see the, the changes on the total recap, and then you can go in and look of what a class sizes are at. It doesn't at this point in time calculate an overall district class size, but you can kind of extrapolate yourself. I'm working with Dave on that, so that he can get in, and we have a total that talks about what our average. Because you'll see some highs of thirty, and you'll see some lows of classes, you know, elementary of sixteen or seventeen in a dual, in a dual-language program. But um, when new kids come to the district, they don't often come in certain grade levels. They tend to come in certain chunks. And so we get some highs and lows, and then we address after school starts. We address FTE needs at schools, depending on where we see enrollment. One thing I will tell you, if you look at the right column, which is the difference between last year and this year, that reflects a lot of kids that were in uh, the Digital Education Center doing Edgenuity, that a thousand kids different. Most of those have come back to face-to-face. So that reflects, I mean, um, yes, we have less kids online. Uh, but um, so we have, oh, a combination, in MyTech High, we have seventy-eight hundred. Uh, last year, uh, you can see what it was, or no, last year it was seventy-eight hundred, this year it's seventy-seven fifty-one. So we're down eighty-seven students in MyTech High. But a lot of those students in MyTech High and in Edgenuity were from other districts. Some of them are from our districts, and you can see almost every school, except uh, what, West and Iva Paw that had minus one, and West had a minus four. Every school got students back that were online during, you know, last year and during the, the, the main part of the pandemic, even the year before. So um, our overall numbers, our overall count right now is uh, twenty-three oh seven seven. And so we're a growing district. Of course, a lot of that growth is in online. But you can see, we're also starting to see that flow of kids from online back into our face-to-face buildings. So provide this as a link, I'll send that out to you. I thought it was on there, but it's not, but I have the link. And you can go in then, look at that link and see, uh, if you have questions, uh, what each, by teacher, what each teacher has as far as classes assigned. Now remember, the ones that have forty, if they're kindergarten, that's two sessions, right? That's twenty and twenty, not forty and forty. So just um, we, we're watching class sizes very carefully so that we stay within the district guidelines overall. There are a few outliers, few, few that are a little bit higher, and a few that are a little bit lower, but the overall average is where we need to stay. So that's our enrollment look. Uh, I would stand for any questions you have about enrollment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Um, update on COVID. I believe it's Matt Jackson.
So, um, I just wanted to give, give a quick updates to start with on our test to stay event. Uh, we had the, I don't know if it's a privilege or whatever, we were the first high school in the state uh, to have to test to stay at Tuilie High School. We had a great partnership um, with the state of Utah and our local health department in, in putting that event together. The state of Utah brought out uh, teams to do the testing. We were there to provide support in that situation. They did a fantastic job. Last Thursday, we tested between eight o'clock in the morning and noon. We tested over fourteen hundred students and staff. Which, that was, to get that many people in and out, that, that was pretty amazing. We were thinking that it would take us all day, maybe a little bit into Friday. Um, Friday was spent uh, picking up students that uh, were absent on Thursday for, for one reason or another. Um, and Tuilie High School actually started testing, excuse me, on, on Wednesday, because they had activities on Thursday that several of the schools that are, that we were competing against had called and said, hey, please test, or we're not coming. We wanna know that you're, you have enough people, you know, players and stuff, and to be able to compete with us and that we're safe in competing with you. So uh, overall, it went, it went really well. Um, we had yesterday's attendance, as we checked attendance, we had about three hundred, just over three hundred students absent at Tuilie High School, uh, which would indicate that we had high compliance with uh, those that selected not to uh, test or that are in isolation because they tested positive. That shows us that we have uh, high compliance with that and that uh, parents and students are, are following the guidelines that are there. So we felt that was very successful. We, we have had um, other schools reach out to us, and the health department has other, had other health departments reach out to them, as well as the state health department has contacted us to just kind of figure out, have us share with them how we did it, you know, what, what worked for us. Uh, we do have some things that, you know, you learn along the way, and there will be, if we get to that point again with another school, there are some things that we'll do differently. Uh, just some minor tweaks to make it flow a little bit easier. So, but we felt that it was overall a very successful event, and things, things went well. Um, the other one that I, the other item that I wanted to bring up to you, uh, we have tried the best that we can to consolidate our testing. We've really moved testing out of the district office and moved it to the Student Services Building on Vine Street. We're still doing a little bit of testing here for, for employees in this building and stuff. But most of our testing for students uh, um, and their families and staff and their families from around the district takes place at the, at our Student Services Building on Night, on Vine Street.
It's really cool, cause it's drive-up.
It is. We have it set up so that it's drive-up, they don't get out of their cars. Uh, we have the QR code for them to be able to register. They can scan that from their car, register, call into the building and say, hey, we're ready for our test. call into the building and say, hey, we're ready for our test. We have a team from the health department and that is also supplemented by some of our district staff to be able to go out and make sure that we're testing. Last week, we performed a hundred and sixty tests there and we found that we have about a one percent positivity rate following that. It was a little closer to two hundred the week before. So we're getting consistently over, you know, over a hundred and fifty people coming through testing. Uh, so it, that, we feel that, you know, our, my main focus this year is not just to keep us open, but to also keep us in our lane, um, to be able to ensure that in the, in the guidance that came from the state, there are things that the legislators and the, and our county officials and city officials are supposed to do. There's things that the health department's required to do. There's things that we're required to do and there's things that parents are required to do. And we're doing our best to maintain that our lane and do, do what's required of us and, uh, to, you know, to fulfill our, our responsibility in that guidance and, and really the biggest thing is to be able to keep us open and functioning. We have COVID in almost every one of our buildings, uh, to some degree or another. Um, but every, all of our schools, you know, we're, we're functioning and we're, we're doing, we're doing a great job in, in dealing with that. Um, one change that we are going to make moving forward, I've been working with the health department today. Um, we have been maintaining the COVID number. There's been a lot of confusion in, and thinking that maybe the health departments are, are hiding something because if you look, if you go to the state of Utah's COVID page, they have every school in the state listed. And for example, you know, Twill High School, we just finished test to stay there and they, the last time I checked, they showed that Twill High School had twelve cases, I think, twelve active cases, which was, we know was not the situation there. Uh, part of that is, response to, uh, contact tracers from local health departments. They're finding that they're, they're not getting the, the response from individuals that do test positive. They're either not answering their phone when, when they call or they answer and refuse to answer those contact tracers, uh, questions. So it makes it a little bit difficult at that level to report. Our reporting gets a little bit easier because parents, you know, so far have been pretty good about if they test positive, they, you know, call, excuse their child, let us know that they've tested positive. So we, our, our information is a little more accurate. We're going to hand that ball off to the, to the health department. And by the end of the week, they will have the, the count for the schools and our COVID's page will have a link to their page. And it'll be, that will be theirs. They have hired.
In fairness, that came from discussions that we had at our leadership training with board members. And Bob and Camille and Melissa were there and you've got some districts like Alpine that's on the very extreme side of we're not doing anything. In my opinion, they're forgetting one other law which says we have to act to promote the health and welfare. And so we're trying to stay in our lane and this is relatively new, but what we really had is two, uh, competing COVID lists that confuse the public. And we're saying that really is something that's not education. I mean, it is, but it's, it fits the health department role of the mitigation and tracking and disease management. And our role is prevention and education. So that did come from discussions that we had.
We'll still have to provide some information to them, but it will be, they'll be seeking our numbers. They have a point of contact that, that will be that, um, attendance secretaries and sec, you know, people that are taking attendance, they can, at the end of the day, they'll just send an email that says we have X number of new cases.
But I guess, can I ask a question? But the thing I'm wondering on that, the, if, if a kid got tested, then that number already went to the health department.
Okay. So that's, that's where there's the issue though, because.
Well, if they're calling the school to get numbers.
Because they don't know where that child goes to school at.
But we gave them access.
We've allowed them to have access to aspire.
They don't need to call the secretaries anymore.
So. Not necessarily, but I mean, there's, there's some things. So, so in order of, unless we want them searching, you know, it's time-consuming to sit and search every single student to find out.
But I'm just afraid that those numbers could be getting double counted. If they're calling the secretary and the secretary says, oh yeah, well, I had seven parents call in these, you know.
It would be a one or the other. We're not going to do both. We're not just going to have them look at their numbers and then put it in and then have somebody call. It would, we'll, we'll have a system that'll be streamlined so that it's not double numbers. The one thing that it won't do though, so the district, the, the health department will carry the same page that we have. It's not going to fix the problem that we have with the state's reporting system. Cause they're not going to go back and report back to the state and have the state fix their numbers. That page, that link that goes to the state's site, that's always going to be off.
We have much more, uh, likelihood of getting one sheet right than we have trying to reconcile two sheets. And so we've talked to the health department, who keeps the tracking, who keeps the numbers so that there's not a confusion out there.
And then one other question, you talked about staying in our lane and I think that's a great thing, but we've got to keep our kids safe. Is it, and you know, I, we're, you guys have done a great job doing everything the state and the legislators have asked us to do without the resources to do it. When you talk about testing, is that staying in our lane? By providing testing for the community? I feel like we're, eh, eh, sorry.
So when, when we, when we test for the community, we're, we're a support to the health department. The health department is.
But we're using our district's staff. Well, but some staff.
On a limited basis, not like we were last year.
But I'm just wondering if that's something that should be handed off to the health depart.
Well, I'll tell you how, I'll tell you how that works.
Okay.
Okay. The health department doesn't get to order tests. The state health department contacts through the state office of education, us as a district and says, how many tests do you need for the month of September, the month of October? It's not the health departments that are doing that. It's the state. So, that's one of those things where there's a shared responsibility to protect the public health.
We were just at this thing and most districts are not testing because it's, they felt like it was out of their lane. I'm not saying we shouldn't. I'm just wondering if that's like.
In fairness, it's not most. It's just a few that aren't testing.
Oh, really?
Most are testing. Now Alpine's not doing anything.
Well, I know Alpine, I'm not referring to Alpine. I just, a lot of them were just saying testing is, we're not health professionals. And I think our district staff, we, I mean, we had to do it last year. And when I take my kid to be tested, I go to like the testing facilities. I don't, eh, think of my school as being somewhere to take them to be tested. I'm just wondering. I'm asking the question. Sorry.
Part of it is, you know, and I would agree that our lane would be maybe, I mean, we could push back at least the community testing, but as far as our employee testing, them being able to have testing in our district really helps avoid the, um, substitute teachers and the loss of time.
By, by being a partner with them, it helps us keep, keep, we feel that it, it allows us to keep from getting to a test, more test to stay situations. We, you know, although everything went very smooth and, you know, we felt that it, we, we were able to get that out of the way easy. I don't want to get to a situation where we're doing it every two weeks or a, a school a week or, you know, something like that. And, and our numbers are, do continue to increase in our, in, in our county, our COVID numbers. They are, uh, our, our current COVID numbers match anywhere. Our, our highs that we had throughout last year, uh, we're, we're already there and we're in September. So.
I will tell you, Melissa, that I spoke after we talked with that one district with the rest of the Salt Lake superintendents and they all felt it was a little bit cavalier to, for a district to say, sorry, we're not involved in that at all. And, um, they, they felt like they needed to work hard to keep a balance and stay in their lane, if you will, but they also in a small district, most of the rural districts felt like, gosh, we don't have the resources that the health department in Utah County does. We're going to work with these, uh, with these partners that we have in these other agencies. So it's, it's, it's difficult to strike a balance. Yeah.
So, you know, right now, the, you know, those hundred and sixty tests, there were, you know, there's a little bit that is, you know, my staff at that building doing some of it, but the majority of it's being done by health department employees. And they've recently just hired, uh, a couple of more people to assist us. When we talked to them today about these high numbers, you know, a hundred and sixty this week, almost two hundred the week before, uh, you know, they're aware of that and they're providing us that so that it's less of a burden on us. So, you're welcome. Any other questions I can answer at this time? I, I feel like we're, it's going well so far. You know, there's been some hiccups and glitches, but schools are open and we're, we're.
Do you mind if I ask a quick question? Are any of our, um, high schools currently close to the test to stay?
So Twill's numbers, they'll zero out. Uh, they had a few more that they wanted to be able to get tested that hadn't had the opportunity to test on Monday. Uh, so we, we will take them back to zero again and their count will start over and the other high schools are not near. So.
Um, Board Member Shields, I will tell you Valerie, that we checked on Monday because John Contreras called me and he was on the line with the governor's office. Dr. Contreras is one of our epidemiologists here and a medical director. And he was on the line with the, 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 because other districts have expressed, well, gosh. Well, they first all started calling us and were interested in talking with us at the, at the conference up there because we were the first large high school. So I got a call from Superintendent Norton and Mountain Crest, if you'll notice, went in to test to stay. They called us to figure out how to do that. And I will just shout out to Aaron Jernigan and the team down at Twill High. They did a marvelous job. But, we checked on Monday because his question was how many of the kids who were quarantined were actually stayed out of school? There were three hundred and fifty-six, something like that, absences at, at Twill High on Monday, which is roughly when you consider the number of opt-outs and the positive cases and those who, uh, should have been quarantined. It's roughly, because you know, they tested fourteen hundred and something kids. So you would expect if only fourteen hundred were tested out of the seventeen hundred plus, that there would be around three hundred kids that were, that were absent and there were on Monday. So it's not closed, but there were, there were quite a few kids absent.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. The last thing, a miss, emergency closure of schools guidelines. Dr. Rogers.
Is just, uh, normally we don't treat guidelines for a first reading or a second reading, but I felt that this was such a big change. We've talked about it. A lot of the Salt Lake districts have said, you know, now that we piloted, um, uh, I, I know there's memes that are going to be going up that show me as the Grinch saying no more snow days kind of a thing. But really the, the big change in here is the philosophy around snow days. And or weather-related snow, uh, closure. Right now, if we have a snow day, we've got to go back to school to make up that snow day. And that always seems to be a controversy because that snow day is identified either in a week that we're having vacation or tacked on to the end of school. So one option on guidelines, and the reason I share this with you is because it's not a simple change. I mean, well, it's relatively simple. It's just you may not agree with that. And there may be some concern that says, hey, we think snow, because I remember, I grew up in Florida, so I don't remember snow days in school, but I remember a snow day when I was in college and at BYU and, uh, I can, you know, um, I can appreciate the mental health value of snow days and the, and the recreation value. But we have the ability to decide similar, and this is patterned after Canyon's, uh, announcement to, um, to look at when we have snow days, either doing a late start, which we currently have, and or pivoting to an online day, which would mean that there wouldn't be snow days. Pe, uh, teachers would be able to work from home. It would pivot to online learning and, um, and then we would not have to make up uh, at the end of the year, those snow days. So I, I, I kind of wanted to treat it, even though it's not a policy, it's a guideline, kind of in our procedure manual. I wanted to give you an opportunity to weigh into that and, and we don't even have to make a recommendation on it tonight or anything like that. And we can let, uh, you know, some public op, opinion happen on it. So this is just really, uh, not just snow days, but other emergency closures, how we would handle that and how we would be able to pivot to online learning in a, in a remote location. So do you have any questions about these guidelines? Do you have any strong feelings or?
Don't we typically build in makeup days?
We identify when the makeup day is going to be built, but it's not built in as a, as a snow day.
So it's like a day off, but then it's, uh, it will say if we have a snow day, then we would make it up.
Then it, we're going to make it up this day after Labor Day or this day on the spring break or this day. But we always have to make those days up.
Thank you for clarifying.
Scott, Brian?
I, I, just my thought. And, and, and I guess I, I'm okay with it, but I don't believe that they're really going to do online learning for a single day with no notice, that it would be of any true value. I mean, and, and if, if we want to just say wink, wink, it's a snow day, we don't have to make it up. That's a great, but I think the real, the realistic expectation that even if you're notified the night before, that a teacher's suddenly going to be able to have a lesson plan and it's going to be out and that the students are going to go in and find it and make up for it a, a, and actually make that meaningful. I think the percentage of those students, there will be some, but I think at the end of the day, most likely those teachers are probably going to end up covering that same material in their class because half of those kids never opened. I, that's just my personal opinion, but I'm okay with it.
That might be very valid. I mean, that's a valid.
But I, I, I'm just, it's one thing when it's a week or we, we were doing the home, you know, the, with the COVID and the school's closed for two weeks and there's some time that they can get ready for that. But I just don't think that, and, and, and even if the teachers can do it, I'm not sure that those students and the mom, and the parents are going to pivot to that point. It's a snow day, you know what? Just go outside and play and we'll catch it on Tuesday. I mean, you know, that's just my personal.
It goes to the same thing though, that when we do the makeup at the end of the school year, no one shows. It's kind of the same idea.
Nobody, nobody likes.
Comes on President's Day, no one really shows.
No one likes the makeup day and we all like the snow day. That's the problem.
And I, I was going to say, um, before someone reminded me out in the audience, elementary kids do not bring home their devices every, over the weekend, every night, some of them, the youngers. My, anyways. So some of them wouldn't even have devices. So I'm okay with it as well.
I'm okay with it, but I'm not convinced it will value.
But I don't think making up a snow day is of value either. So it's, it's.
I did argue with you.
Yes, yes.
It's interesting that we, um, as, as we're sharing observations that we, you know, w, w, we can't possibly run everybody's
life.
Roads and make sure that everybody's driveway is dug out with snow. I hope we get lots of snow. I hope this is a, a problem or I hope it's a frequent thing because we need the water. But we can't, we drive the district in general and we contact people on our snow day process. But every year we have people that say, I don't like snow days with respect to, because my wife and I can't be home with our kids and it really, you know. So they push for not having snow days. I've heard of people saying, I can't get out of my driveway. And then you find them at Walmart in, an hour later. And so we're probably going to go mostly if, you know, if I'm making that judgment call in consult with you and, and with Clarissa, we're going to probably go mostly to delayed start because most of the time, unless we get really socked with snow, they can get snow cleared, uh, i- if we just delay start a couple of years. So I don't think we're talking about many days. It's, do you want to make up one or do you want to pivot to online? It, it's kind of to me, I'm not sure either one is ideal, but.
So I just want to make sure I understand with the document, are you looking for an approval or for a second read? Cause.
I'm looking for, it's not really a second read, but I'm looking for your comments and public comment on these proposed guidelines. So I'm kind of treating it like a policy and I, I don't need it. Knock on wood. We don't approve it today. We'll have a snow day next week or something like that.
The different, because there's a ton of like red that's written out or.
Okay, there's a there's a red, which is our current policy, and then there's a final draft, there's two on there.
So the red is the current guideline?
And the red is current guidelines, that's called the red line version where we changed it and then there's the final draft.
Okay. This is just me, but I kind of like the old guideline, it's clear, concise, short, quick, easy, but.
But it doesn't allow for online.
It doesn't.
It does talk about the two hour delay.
So does the so does the new one. No, the current policy is it reads, we still have the delay in there. But we can also close school for, the reason I didn't call it weather related is there are other emergencies we would have to consider a closure. Like for example, you know, a gas spill or a fire or some other situation. Or early closure, early release for not in our regular schedule, but early release. Because for example, in the winter, power goes out at a building and then it gets cold and we got to get those kids home before. Or there's a storm coming in, we might have to release early. So it it gives us room to early release, it gives us room to delayed start. And then instead of going to a snow day and canceling school and making it up, we would go to an online day. But either way, there are challenges, I think Scott's right. So we're just wanting to get some opinion instead of just blasting it out and saying, here's where we're going, we want to get some feedback.
Camille, do you have anything else? Okay.
So I'll, if that's, I would like to bring it back or at least, you know, ask folks to comment on what they think. Because it's a little bit of a different philosophy, but I don't think it's as huge as, you know, everybody might make it, but I don't know.
Okay, thank you, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll motion adjourn.
Or all in favor? Aye. Good night, everyone, thank you.